Bolton House. Davis.
Here.
Flora. Inman. Crane. Rothrock. And Thomas.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, item one on our agenda is public hearings and we don't have any public hearings this evening. So we will move into special presentations and we do have one special presentation this evening. Our special presentation recognizes shop small Saturday, which will be observed on Sunday. I'm sorry, the Saturday after Thanksgiving, November 27th. This initiative aims to encourage supporting our small businesses during one of the most popular shopping periods of the year. The city of Mission is very fortunate to have a variety of small independently owned businesses spread out our chopping district. It includes anything from snowboards to specialty roast coffee beans and handmade jewelry. We hope that while you consider that special get holiday gift or delicious treat for your holiday table, that you remember these businesses and their owners that work hard not only during the holiday season, but all year to provide products and services that are unique and special as their customers. Moving on to item three issuance of notes and bonds, we don't have any items related to the issuance of notes and notes and bonds. So we'll move on to item four consent agenda. Our consent agenda does have four items on it tonight. Our council committees met on November 3rd and we fully discussed each of these items. The committees agree that the items listed on our consent agenda are routine enough to be considered under a single motion. If a council member or a member of the public would like an item removed from the consent agenda, they may make that request at this time. Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor, I move the city council adopt the consent agenda as printed items four A through four D.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Seeing none, Audrey, please call for the vote.
Thomas.
Aye.
Bolton House.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Rothrock. Inman. Crane.
Aye.
And Flora. Motion carry.
All right, that concludes item four. Moving on to item five, public comments. If any members of the public would like to make a comment on an item that is not included on this agenda, now would be the time. If you are participating through Zoom, please either add your comment in the chat feature and it will be read aloud or note that you would like to speak, we will call on you shortly to make your comments. Please remember your comments or questions are visible to everyone in the meeting. If you are part of our in-person group this evening, please raise your hand but stay seated and we will call on you to come to the lectern to make your comments. When you make your comment, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Anybody have any comments? Seeing none, we will move on to item six, action items from the planning commission. We don't have any items from the planning commission, so we'll move on to item seven, committee reports. Council member Crane, will you please provide a report from the finance and administration committee?
Thank you, mayor. The finance and administration committee met on November 3rd and considered a total of three items. The acceptance of the meeting minutes were approved under the consent agenda along with the DTI contract renewal and human service fund allocation. There are no additional items for review for the regular agenda tonight. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Council member Bolton House, will you please provide a report from the community development committee?
Yes, thank you, mayor. The community development committee also met on November 3rd and considered five items with the meeting minutes and DTI contract renewal included for approval under the consent agenda. There are three additional items for review tonight. Seven A, the 51st Street sidewalk project. Staff had received a number of complaints regarding the condition of the sidewalk located on 51st Street east of Dearborn. The sidewalk between Dearborn Street and Woodson Street has numerous cracks and tree roots have displaced some of the sidewalk panels, which is a safety hazard and is non-compliant with ADA requirements. The sidewalk is used by many students who walk this route every day to and from Russian Elementary. The scope of work to improve the sidewalk and make it ADA compliant includes removal and replacement of 365 square feet of sidewalk and curb and gutter, as well as the installation of three ADA ramps. Additionally, in one location, the sidewalk will be constructed around an existing tree which is over 100 years old. This tree is being protected at the request of the property owner and the owner is willing to grant a sidewalk easement and temporary construction easement for the city to relocate the sidewalk further north around the tree. Three bids were obtained for this project with GB Construction submitting the lowest and most responsive bid in an amount not to exceed $47,000, Following approval of this bid and notice to proceed, the project is estimated to be completed by the end of December 2021, weather permitting. Mayor, I move that the city council approve a contract with GB Construction for sidewalk repairs for the 51st Street and Dearborn sidewalk repair project in an amount not to exceed $47,868.85.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any comments or discussion on this item? Yes, Hillary.
Thank you, mayor. I just wanted to thank Laura and Celia for working so diligently with the neighbors on this. This is such an important little section of sidewalk for all of Ward One as it connects, you know, a lot of shopping areas to a lot of apartments. So thank you both so much for working hard and expeditiously.
Anyone else? Hearing none, Audrey, please call for the vote.
Davis.
Aye.
Flora.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Inman.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Rothrock. Bolton House.
Aye.
Motion carry.
All right, item seven B is about a parking ordinance. There are numerous no parking signs installed on streets within the city and the signage is not uniform. It is costly to maintain signs and there is the potential for drivers to ignore signs that may be considered unnecessary or excessive. Additionally, staff receives a number of requests to remove or add additional no parking signs on city streets. Therefore, there is a need to establish clear and consistent operating procedures. Following discussion at the October 6th Community Development Committee meeting, staff prepared a revised ordinance to prohibit parking on main traffic ways and specific traffic way connections, as well as proposed design guidelines for no parking signs on residential streets. The design guidelines include specifications such as prohibited parked on streets if there is a clear and present operational safety issue, as well as signs based on street widths and in residential areas where there is large traffic generators adjacent to residential streets. Staff plans to implement a pilot study to assess the effectiveness of the petition process included in the proposed design guidelines. Once this pilot study is completed, staff will present the results at a future city council meeting. Mayor, I move the city council approve an ordinance to prohibit parking on main traffic ways and specific connections, as well as approve the proposed design guidelines for no parking signs on residential streets.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion or question on this item? Yeah, I'm looking at council first. Yes, Solly.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify one thing. Sorry it's not working, but the structure of the ordinance made it a little hard to see, but the only traffic way connection where parking is prohibited is 63rd between Knoll and Rose. Is that correct? I see Celia nodding, so we'll take that as a yes.
Anyone else on council? All right, come on up. State your name and city, please.
Hello, mayor and council. My name is Josh Thede. I am from Mission, Kansas. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak today. A couple of things on this. First of all, I'd like to thank staff for the responses to my emails and really answer my questions very well. So kudos to the staff. I'm on the Sustainability Commission for reference, but I am speaking as a personal private citizen tonight, just on behalf of myself. Parking is critical to get right in this city, so no parking decisions to be made lightly. So I just want to make sure that everyone takes this decision very seriously tonight about parking and road classifications to ensure that parking gets determined correctly because it directly affects the affordability of developments in the city. It directly affects walkability and it directly affects overall quality of life. In the 2007 comprehensive plan, on-street parking is mentioned several times, including a time when it says on-street parking is critical to create a barrier between fast-moving traffic and cars to promote walkability. In addition, the book by Jeff Speck, Walkable City Rules, Rule Number 63 is to put curb parking almost everywhere. The rule states striped streets to contain parking on both flanks and all locations where that parking is likely to be used, with the exceptions only where a bike lane is deemed more necessary. I agree that parking needs to be banned on fast-moving roads and highways, but I would urge you to carefully consider each and every specific parking in the city. So I would just like to make sure overall I'm neutral on this specific item, but any future parking must be carefully considered. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Josh. Yes, Hillary.
I just have a quick question for Josh. Josh, are there any of the proposed street corridors that you're particularly concerned about on what's proposed tonight? That haven't been addressed by staff?
Steph was able to address my traffic count questions and provide data. I would always love more bicycle count data in addition to just automobiles, but the threshold also seems a little bit low, so things like Martway is borderline for me on whether we should ban parking or not. I've lived in the apartments right there and they actually encouraged for different special events to park on Martway. But considering where that threshold is, I would definitely agree Metcalf and I definitely agree 63rd Street for no parking. I just would have to figure out exactly where that line is and exact traffic counts to consider it carefully.
One follow-up if I can. So for those other streets, would you feel more confident if there were kind of guarantees that bike lanes would eventually be added when a, you know, an overlay or improvements are made to those streets? If applicable, not guarantee like, you know, but just saying, is that something that would make you feel more comfortable if we're?
Mayor, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Josh, go ahead.
Yes, bike lanes would also be great for the city anytime we're allocating space in this city. If it's only allocated to cars and a lot of cars and a lot of cars moving fast, I don't think that is an equitable shared use of the road. So if there is some method to share it with all road users and all people in the city, our streets are for people. So if we can get people walking, rolling, bicycling, as well as driving on our streets to share those modes equally, I think that's a great idea.
All right, anybody else? Seeing none, Audrey, please call for the vote.
Flora.
Aye.
Bolton House.
Aye.
Inman. Crane.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Rothrock.
Aye.
Motion carry.
All right, the last and final item is item seven C, the Mohawk Park Final Design. In September 2021, council approved the 2022 to 2026 capital improvement, also known as the CIP program, which included a project in 2022 to add restrooms and a pavilion to Mohawk Park in accordance with the conceptual design plans. Since council's budget approval, the Land and Water Conservation Fund has awarded Mission $394,560 for the design and construction of the restroom amenity. This grant reimburses the city for paid expenses and is available immediately. The next step in moving to construction involves completing the final design and developing construction documents for bidding. SFS Architects has proposed $135,000 for design, engineering, bidding and procurement, as well as construction administration services for the project. Mayor, I move the city council approve a contract with SFS Architects for final design services for Mohawk Park Phase 1B, the restroom and pavilion phase, in an amount not to exceed $135,000.
We have a motion and a second, discussion or questions? Seeing none, Audrey, please call for the vote.
Inman. Flora.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Thomas.
Aye.
Crane.
Aye.
Bolton House.
Aye.
Rothrock.
Aye.
Motion carry.
Mayor, that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. That concludes item seven, moving on to item eight, unfinished business. We don't have any unfinished business, so we're on to item nine, new business. We don't have any new business, so item 10, comments from the city council. This is an opportunity for comments from our council members. Does anybody have anything they would like to share? I thought we were going to not have any, Debbie.
I just want to remind people, it's that time of year where our community members and families really need help. And I know the community center's done a phenomenal job in getting people's names put on a tree for you to pick up and potentially adopt. We're fortunate, we got a family of six, a mom and five kids, and finished with their shopping and it's a joy to go out and help people in this community that need additional help at this time of year. So I encourage you all to take a name. Thanks.
Thank you. Ken?
I would just like to say congratulations to all those who ran for office for city council and for ward ward positions. Congratulations on a well-run race for mayor as well, and thank you for your service. And we appreciate all the work that each of you have done throughout this time. I know that we'll be saying so long in a month, but I did want to take a time to say thank you for all of your public service.
Congratulations, everyone.
Anybody else? Seeing none, we will move on to item 11, mayor's report. I don't have anything to report, so we'll move on to the city administrator's report. Laura.
On track for a record meeting this evening. A couple of things, Audrey put at your place this evening, the invitation to the Johnson Wyandotte County mayor's holiday social event. Apparently this invitation went to Martha's old email, which didn't forward to us, and so we're a little bit behind the eight ball there. And I'd forgotten because they canceled it last year. They typically schedule it for the first Wednesday of December, which always conflicts with our committee meeting. So in years past, we have moved the committee meeting to the second Wednesday. Just, I know this is new information, but wanted to see if there's any appetite or ability, if several of you are interested in attending, if you want to look at shifting that committee meeting to December 8th as opposed to December 1st. And we can come back to that if you want to look at calendars or, yes, council member Davis.
How does that how does that move impact staff's work in terms of the timeframe of a week?
Staff would be thrilled with that move because the December 1st meeting, the packet has to, instead of having until Friday of next week because of the Thanksgiving holiday, we would have to get packets out to you on Wednesday. So staff would be in full support of that, but we'll make whatever happened happen.
My personal schedule is fine with moving.
Comfortable with that, okay. Same time, 6:30, December 8th. We'll make sure we get calendars updated for the public, so thank you for that. Also, I did just want to mention that we will reschedule the police department presentations that were originally intended for the agenda tonight. We had several. The officers and their families had an opportunity to do sort of a very department-centered celebration back in October at Antioch Park, which they loved. But it's also important for us to be able to recognize them here publicly, but we've had a very sort of tragic situation and fatality situation in our community that has tapped our public safety resources this evening. And so those who had been called in to receive award presentations this evening are now out working the streets and helping to support that. So we will get them rescheduled and be able to share with you the great things that they are doing day in and day out on the streets of Mission. So I didn't want that to go unnoticed since it was printed on the face of your agenda. For those of you who were able to attend the comp plan open house last night, I think we had a really great turnout. I think overall, we had about 53 attendees. From the time that I was there, folks were very engaged and interacting with both staff and the consultants. And I think you all, so we'll continue to move that process forward. But some good comments through that process, but and a lot of new faces. As I kept telling Confluence, I think there were a lot of folks that I didn't recognize, which is always to me a great hallmark of a very successful public engagement session. Thanks for seniors tomorrow. So for those of you who are serving or plating or working behind the scenes, please be here at the community center at 11:30 if anyone is attending. I think that 11:30, 11:45 timeframe probably good, but we have about 213, I think was the last number that I saw, seniors who will be participating in that event tomorrow. Glad to be able to offer that safely this year. You may have noticed the holiday light recycling efforts that are supported by the Sustainability Commission have kicked off and the drop-off boxes are located. I believe there's one here at the community center and one at Mac Hardware. So if you have old holiday lights, please don't throw them in the trash, please drop them off and they'll be recycled appropriately through January 15th, I believe. Council member Crane referenced the family adoption program. Things are going well and smoothly this year. Thanksgiving basket assembly is scheduled for 8:00 AM on Monday, this coming Monday, November 22nd. So if you're available and would like to help put the baskets together for that, we can always use the hands in that process. Just a reminder that holiday lights and festive sites will be scheduled is scheduled for Friday, December 3rd at the market site. So it's moving from its location here the last several years to the market site. Starts at 5:30, so we'll have the mayor's tree lighting and a variety of other Santa and a variety of other events for family and others. The Mission Community Food Pantry, again, just a reminder that their December, their one and only distribution event in December will be Thursday, December 10th, instead of second and fourth this month and next month, they're only having one because of the holiday schedules. And then at City Hall and Public Works this week, we've been working, the subcontractors through the FCIP project have been working to change out and install the LED lighting, which has been really fantastic, noticeable difference in the offices at City Hall. So it's exciting to see that moving forward and they are moving very quickly on that. I will touch on a couple of things in the monthly financial report in a moment. The only other thing is that I think we've mentioned to you all the sinkhole that had developed at 56th and Beverly Lane. We've been working, we don't, it was not on tonight's agenda. We don't have costs finalized with the contractor. We anticipate that to be in the neighborhood of $25,000 to $30,000. We don't want to, because of the condition of that sinkhole, to hold that to your December meeting, so would plan to go ahead and move forward with those repairs and then present that ratification of those expenses to you, but did want to bring that to your attention this evening. And then just kind of briefly on the October financials, again, the percentages and amounts collected estimated percent of budget look a little bit different. We aren't quite as far ahead of the curve as it has appeared for the first nine months of the year because it was only just last month that we updated with the revised 2021 budget figures, but we are absolutely tracking where we thought we would, particularly in those sales tax categories. So that's, that's good. We hope that that will continue and we'll see strong performance through this holiday shopping season. So financials look strong. Fund balance again continues to be, to be in a, in a good position, strong position. Departmental expenditures are tracking appropriately. As you can kind of see, community center revenues continue to pick up slightly. We see, I think we hit a record the week of the election, even when we subtracted out those who were in the facility for voting purposes only, looking at levels that we hadn't hit in terms of attendance and users in the facility since pre-COVID. So that's encouraging and exciting. We'll share more at the December committee meeting, but we did put an RFP out on the street for the community center feasibility study. So that is out and we'll look to be awarding that contract in January. The only other thing from a financial standpoint is we've done some preliminary work with a staff member at Ellers, our financial advisor, who has some expertise in doing some of the estimating surrounding the potential to look at using the ARPA funding that we received to replace lost revenue. We're still working through and kind of nuancing some of that, but at a preliminary look and some information. And again, we'll provide you with a more detailed summary in December. You'll recall, we have been allocated about a million and a half dollars in ARPA funding. Our revenue loss, comprehensive revenue loss over that time period is about two and a half million. So we are safely within a window to be able to capture those ARPA, really all of those ARPA revenues for replacing lost revenue, which provides us with the greatest amount of flexibility in how we use general fund, fund balance, or those things to, if there are other projects that the council might want to consider. So we've been through that. Again, we'll be wrapping that analysis up and presenting that information to you in December. And unless anybody has any other questions on the financials, yes, Kristen? Thank you for that question. So I reached, so last year we brought forward a draft legislative platform in November and quite frankly, between the sales tax election and a variety of other things, we didn't get that, we didn't get that done. But I have been talking with both Stuart and Mallory and we in fact had a Zoom call yesterday briefly to just start that conversation. So we'll be bringing that draft program to the December committee meeting for your review and kind of evaluation. One of the things that we talked about yesterday was this movement towards exempting the sales tax on food. They're going to do some additional research for us to see whether they think there's momentum or conversation around whether that will include cities as well, because right now it's simply the state sales tax. So we, he's going to do some additional research around that for us so that the council can really make an informed decision about what position we would want to take with respect to that. I think council member Crane, did you?
It's not financially related.
That's okay.
Do we have a projected timeframe for moving back to City Hall? On our council meetings and committee meetings?
We don't, that's really, if that's something that's up to you all, I think in terms of your comfort level. I think it's been probably a year plus. We did a survey regarding coming back to in-person meetings. We'd be happy to put together a similar survey if you're interested, or I don't know how you would like to facilitate that conversation, but.
I don't have a preference one way or another. I just wondered if there was a projected date and now that the Johnson County numbers appear to be going up, it probably, we just have to look down the line and see how it pans out.
Yeah, I think so. And I think I think some of the conversations that we've been having internally, you know, the numbers are trending in the right direction, the numbers are trending up in the county. Again, I think we're going to see that trend continue through the holidays despite the advice and Again, I think we're going to see that trend continue through the holidays, despite the advice and counsel being given to people with respect to family gatherings and that sort of thing. So I think probably as long, particularly as long as we're offering the virtual, a combination of virtual and in-person meetings, I would imagine we would, would be here for a while. But we're, again, we're happy to either facilitate that conversation or put out another brief survey and just kind of collect some opinions and thoughts about people's sentiments with respect to that. And that's all I have this evening, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item 13, executive session. We do not have a need for an executive session, so we are adjourned. But before we adjourn tonight, I want to share with the public that the video from this meeting will be available through a link on our website, missionks.org. There being no further business this evening, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.